State the time.
Okay, the time is 5:09 and I call this Board Workshop to Order. Mr. Perez, am I correct in saying that a quorum is not required for this?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can continue at this time there not being a quorum. This is again a Board Workshop. And on the agenda, we have facility needs district-wide. And the second item is possible bond election on May 7, 2016 to consider approval of a bond issue to address facility needs. Dr. Alejandro.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. There's a lot of needs that we have district-wide. And what we have been doing as time has been going by is that we've been pretty much putting them on a list and trying to address them as best we can due to savings from the budget and things like this. But, you know, the needs continue to increase and of course, our ability to be able to maintain or catch up with these needs is becoming a burdensome in the sense that we can't really do that. So, we have a lot of needs in the district. We have, just some of the ones that we've been looking at recently are Roosevelt. There's a building that got flooded and it has raised a big concern. We have mini gyms that we would like to include. I mean, it's South Texas heat. Our kids sometimes go out there and we have pavilions, but it's not a good sight to see our kids trying to get underneath the shade during really hot days. We also have a need in the sense that we have three early college high schools that we have been approved for and they're very successful. And so, what we need to do is as growth continues, it's going to be difficult to house them. So, we also have a need for an early college high school complex where we can put all three early college high schools together. We do have a lot of roofing needs and across the district in the campuses as well as in our offices and our buildings. We have the fieldhouse at Weslaco High School that pretty much has out, the number of athletes that we have have outgrown that facility. One of the biggest concerns that we have is that because we have such a large number of athletes that are going through there, there's not enough time for this building to actually air out and dry out, which could potentially promote bacterial growth that would be unhealthy for our students. The, there's also a need for the girls to have a facility so, because that program is continuing to grow. So, right now, they're using the dressing rooms at the Sepúlveda Gym and any available space, but it's all cramped and they're in desperate need of some facility. We also have the band hall at East. That, that one has, the number of students have outgrown the facility as well, so we would need to address that concern. And there's also a concern about the dressing facilities for the girls at East High School. So, these are, these are all major concerns. We have our tracks that, that we need to go ahead and, and address. It might not seem like, like that's that important, but you know, these is, the tracks are for our kids, practice for fielding track and, and they run and things like that. And we don't want anything that could eventually lead to an injury for our students, so those also need to be addressed. So, as you can see, there's a lot of needs across the district and, you know, we can't keep up with that. Now, we've been presented with a very unique opportunity in the sense that there was something called the Instructional Facilities Allotment that was issued by the state and districts could qualify for subsidized funding. And then, this was available in the past. We've had a couple of bonds that, that we got through IFA monies, but this had not been available for the last few years. It just surfaced again and they funded a certain amount. The, right now, there's a list of districts that qualify. Weslaco qualifies. Based on our ADA, we qualify for a $70 million loan, a bond, and this is at a rate of 35% to 65%. So, what that means is that if we get a bond for $70 million, which we qualify for, then the district would only have to pay 35% of it. The state would pay the remaining 65%. So, to put it in, in a little bit different perspective, for every dollar, we only have to pay back 35 cents. So, the state will forgive the, the remaining 65 or they will, they will pay the 65 cents. The concern here is that the future of the IFA's is not certain. We don't know if there will be another round. It's still very questionable. Even this one, it took a lot clamoring from a lot of people to make sure that this round even became available. Now, the needs at the districts continues to increase and what, what is happening is that a lot of districts have gone out for bonds, but they're paying 100%. We have some neighboring districts here in the valley that have gone out for $20 million bonds and, you know, things like that. Smaller bonds that, that they feel that they can go ahead and pay off, but those are at 100%. So, they borrowed $20 million, they're having to pay back $20 million plus interest. For us, it's, it's unique in the sense that we don't have to pay back the 70 million. We only pay 35% of that. So, we have a unique opportunity right now. Now, as I mentioned, the list of projects that we're looking at far exceeds the $70 million that we qualify for. We actually, right now, what we consider to be priority projects is we're, we're looking at needing $109 million to be able to do those projects. Now, that doesn't mean that that's going to take care of all the projects in the district, by no means, but that means that if we get these, these are the most critical that we would want to address. So, where we qualify for a, a $70 million bond from the state right now, the needs that we consider to be priority, we're looking at about $109 million. Now, because of the bonds that we have had in the past and we, we could, we are looking at the possibility of having the same kind of rate also for the $109 million. The concern that I have is that the community at large, all they need to do is look up TA website and see that Weslaco qualifies for $70 million at a rate of 35-65 split. The calculations to take a look at $109 million or an additional 39 million, that's a little bit more complex to calculate, even though we would qualify for the same amount. So, that's, that's what we're currently looking at. If we go with the $70 million, then we would have to reduce the projects that we would need to address. Some of the projects that we feel that are in greater need are the Building B that flooded in October at Roosevelt. So, that would be one of ones that we would definitely want to address as quickly as possible. The other ones are the mini gyms. And again, as I said, there's a lot of hot days in, in South Texas and, and our kids starting school in late August and of course, going through the end of May, there's a lot of days that they're out there in the, in the hot sun. So, the mini gyms are critical. And of course, because of the expansion and growth that we have in our early college high school, we would definitely benefit from, from the getting our early college high school, brand-new complex built. So, we would be looking at those particular projects. Now, that, the total for that is approximately, approximately $78 million. That's about $8 million more than what we would qualify for, but we feel confident that through smart financing, we would be able to save the additional $8 million that we need. We did refinance a couple of our bonds and we would allocate that money towards the savings to meet the, the additional $8 million. Now, on the mini gyms, that would be with a brick veneer structure. We also have the option of going to a prefabricated metal building and that would reduce the cost of each mini gym by about half a million dollars. So, that would allow us to also address some of our roofing needs that are critical. We have a committee and roofing was one of the ones, one of the things that they definitely wanted to make sure that it was a priority project. If we go with the prefabricated metal buildings, then what would happen is that that, the savings would allow us to go ahead and address that $3.8 million in roofing needs that we have, that would qualify as part of the bond. The total for that, including the roofing and changing it to a prefabricated metal building for the mini gyms, would have a total price tag of about $75 million. So, these are the options that we have been looking at. So, we have Mr. Chris Vella here that can answer any questions. Some of the committee members for the, for, that we have been meeting with are also available in case you have any questions.
Well, again, Dr. Alejandro, thank you. We just finished with a, a committee meeting on, on the bond just 20 minutes earlier that then this meeting started. And we were, we've been meeting approximately for about three or four times and it's been a two-hour meeting and, and we started with more needs than, than what we trimmed it down to. The whole committee met as a whole. I'm going to say 90% gave us input of what they felt we needed to do. You know, so it's not anything that administration felt that this is what we want. It was a, a committee as a whole. I mean, the Roosevelt Elementary, definitely a, a need for, for our district that needs to be addressed. And, and like Dr. Alejandro mentioned, the, the mini gyms. I've, I've heard of mini gyms for, for years and years and years that our children, and it's not only the heat, but also there's a, there's a problem, other problems with, with nature out there that, and birds that like to congregate under those structures. You know, and then our, our children have to exercise, play and, and congregate under those, under those same structures. So, it is a health issue and, and a heat issue also. Those structures, I'm sure, would be used for, for a very long time. And I'm going to put my, my two cents in and, and then I'll pass it on to other board members. This is a, again, this is a, a workshop, so at any time, if somebody wants to add, jump in and add, then y'all are more than welcome to come up to the, to the podium. And, but the needs are real and, and we have this opportunity to, to get some money at a discounted rate, you know? And it, and then this is all for, for our children and for our children's children. You know, it's something that, that gets put on for, for the future. So, again, this is a workshop and Chris, thank you for being here with us today and we'll, we'll probably get you up here in a little bit. But, anybody, any board members have any comments?
First of all, who, who was part of the committee that was here?
Y'all can stand up, that'd be great.
Please stand. Oh, okay. Mr. Smith, can I ask you a couple of questions? Come on up here.
Put you in the spot.
Yeah, you know, being a parent with Weslaco ISD, what was the consensus of the committee? Were they all proactive or pro with the amount that Dr. Alejandro mentioned? Because there are a lot of needs and you have students in our district, so what was the consensus of, of the committee?
I think everybody's for it. I mean, I, I think that's the main thing, they see the need. I think the main thing that we want to make sure of that, that, that the, each need is addressed and it's done fiscally responsibly. And that was the biggest key and that it's something that the community can, can, can buy into and feel like it's a, it's something that the schoolers are spending the money wisely.
Okay. And, and I, and, and you know, there's a lot of needs and like Dr. Alejandro mentioned and I assume, I'm assuming that you prioritize which is the needs, like he mentioned, Roosevelt and some of the other areas. So, if, and again, the people of Weslaco will have to vote on it, you know? And if the majority of, of the committee and people are positive and they know there's a need and we're going to use the money wisely and take advantage, for example, if it's $100 million bondage, then it's going to be 65 million from the state given to us and we have to come up with a 35 million with the, the tax rate. So, good, thank you for your information.
Okay, appreciate it.
Ms. Ortiz.
I know you had some concerns. I know our list shows Building B, but Ms. Ortiz is a parent over at Roosevelt and she wanted to share some concerns aside from Building B.
I have come before this committee, yes, two times. This is my first meeting that I was in this committee for the bond. And I saw Building B, which is awesome, but my concern is that building, Building B was built in the 1979, more or less around that time. Building A was built in 2007 and the original building, 1953. My father-in-law, which is 60-something, went to that school. And my concern is, are we going to put all of 700, almost 700 students in Building A? Ms., Dr. Alejandro said we're going to move them around, but that's going to be most likely. The whole school can't be rebuilt, that I understand. My other concern is, with that being said, is there a way to tie in the school? Because with, even with a new building, kids are going to have to still go outside when it rains, even though there's the little techitos, they still get wet, they still get cold. Mosquitoes with the Zika virus now, they could still get bit. That is a concern that I have and several parents that I have talked to in the school have. If something's going to be done to enclose it, if the architect has come and walked around the school and say, "Okay, this is kind of outdated, we could do something else," or is it based on pictures that they've seen? Is that, those are my concerns.
And I think she brings up a good point. What I brought up to, to Dr. A. and to some of the other gentlemen here was, I believe Roosevelt is the only elementary that doesn't have what our other elementaries is totally enclosed. And if there is a way, you know, I know the 70 million, but if what came out of the committee was the 109 and we're able to attain that, then is there a way to look at architecturally using Building A as, as the, the starting point and build around it so that we may have the cafeteria, the Building B cafeteria, everything else along with the mini gym, kind of all working together like our other elementary schools are able to do currently? And that's what I would look at on my point of view as far as, you know, with listening to the concerns.
Yeah, because if I go back to the parents, they're going to be, pero no hicieron nada. They just rebuilt lo que they messed up the first time. And what am I going to tell them? Well, this is what was approved, I don't know, I don't have that answer. That is something, because I know they're going to ask me those questions.
And thank, thank you for, for coming out today and participating on such short notice, but I would like to really reevaluate Roosevelt as a priority and trying to bring it up. You know, again, if we are going to aim for the 109, then I think that allows us to really take a look at closing in that campus.
And, and that's something that we could work with the architects and survey the, the campus and try to figure out what we can do to try to, to try to enclose it.
And then, to touch on, on mini gyms with Mo, that was, when I was a teacher, you know, and I taught PE, they always said, and I believe there was a bond back then when I taught, "We're going to get mini gyms," and it was the first thing to scratch. I want to make sure that we're not going to scratch the mini gyms. You know, back then, obesity was our, our biggest concern and we still have the same concern. So, along with, with all the natural environment and all the feces that is always at, at the pavilion floor, you know, this really does help. So, please, just keep in mind that that's the one part that we cannot take off and sacrifice.
Well, the, the list that you have before, or that you have before you would be the list that we will work off and, you know, we, if, if this does get approved, then basically what the message will be that we are committed to addressing these particular needs for whatever, the, either the 70 million or the 109 million. So, it will be a commitment from our, from us to the community.
Well, if we go into the 109, then just let it reflect the, the possibility of enclosing Roosevelt. Great. Thank you.
I agree. I agree on that, Doc.
Dr. on this chart that we have here for the impact of tax rates, this is representing how much?
The, the-
If, if we go out with a 70 or both?
Well, it's actually, if you take a look at the very bottom, the two rows at the bottom, the first one, on the first column is, is a tax increase of seven cents per $100 value. And then the second row is a tax increase of 12 cents. And, and the 12 cents would be for the 109 million, the seven cents would be for the 70 million.
Can everybody see what Oscar is?
Yeah, they got it up.
Okay, there it is.
Okay. So, that's, that's what the tax increase would be on, on the property values depending on 50,000 up to 200,000?
Correct.
And this is a yearly increase?
Correct.
All right.
Now, Doc, you made a very important comment earlier as to people who are elderly. Could you repeat that for us?
Yes, it's going to be very important to make sure that our older voters realize that their taxes are frozen, so they will not have a tax increase. Okay? So, I know that one of the things that happens is as word spreads, and, and this is, this is going to be extremely important as we pursue, whichever one we pursue, but as word spreads, sometimes they'll hear it from their neighbors, they'll hear it from their family members or things like that, and they'll say, "Well, they're going to increase taxes." And that strikes fear in our older voters because a lot of them are on fixed incomes that cannot afford whatever little increase it is. To us, it might seem like a small increase, 50, 70, $100 a year. For some of our older citizens, you know, it is a, a great burden for them. So, it's going to be very important for them to, or for us to send out the message that their taxes are not going to be affected because they're frozen already.
And these is the ages of 62 and up or 65?
65.
65?
65, correct.
I guess that's important for everybody to know.
65?
Yeah.
Right. Now, and also, there, there's some other exemptions that would also qualify. You know, you have your disabled veterans and things like that. We see that in, in our monthly meetings as things that affect our taxes because of exemptions that, that qualify. So, you know, that, that's going to be important. Now, the other thing that you might have noticed on here on this chart is that in your homestead exemption, we used to have a $15,000 homestead exemption and the, the law just changed or the, there was a change in the legislation that increased it to 25,000. So, if, you know, we had talked about $100,000 home, increasing, increasing taxes about $70, well, actually now, it's a $125,000 home that would increase about $70 because of the homestead exemption, because it knocks down 25,000 and the actual taxable value is only the $100,000. So, so that also is, is an additional opportunity for our voters or community to see that, you know, they're not going to have to be burdened with the total amount that, that we're looking for.
Audience, anybody have any comments? Come on up.
I just want to be the first to publicly announce that after being on the bond committee and thank you all for, well, actually, Dr. Rivera, because I'm on his committee, after being on it for the past three meetings and after being presented the new list that was presented to us this afternoon, I'll be the first to publicly go, publicly go on record on the committee, community to fight and get the $109 million because of the simple fact how there's major facility needs and as the major questions that I arose in the meeting earlier, I mean, the facilities need to be met and students need to make sure, student, the safety of the students is number one priority and that $109 million is what's needed right now. So, I'll be the first to go on record on behalf of the community at this point to vouch and say that I will be out there fighting for the $109 million. So, hopefully, the board on the special meeting approves the $109 million because of the simple fact how it's needed. And I know that once I go out there to speak to members of the great city of Weslaco, they will be on the same page and vouch for the simple fact how it's a win-win for everyone involved because there's sons or daughters, grandkids, whatnot. Our products and our, they go here to the district, so I just wanted to add that caveat that I will be out there vouching for the $109 million on behalf of the district.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Now, Doc, and maybe Chris, maybe you're going to be better answering this question, but I'm not sure. We, we go out and approve this, this bond to go out for, for election, when, on a timeline, when do you have to give numbers exactly of what you're doing, of where the money's going? The, in other words, I know that the, the dollars have to go, when we go out for this bond, the, the money is going to go for a certain project. At what point do, does the district have to give the list of what, what we're doing? And I know we've already have a list that's, that's out there. At what time does that become law?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chris Vella, financial advisor with First Southwest Company for the district. If I understand your, your question correctly, the projects that you have deliberated and you have delineated as priorities, in essence, become a form of a contract between the district and the voters and the Attorney General's office. In other words, these projects, you, you've said that, that you would, you know, you would do. Now, if you look at the proposition in the order, they're very broad in terms of to construct, to acquire, to equip and to pay other matters, incident to here to or whatever. The, the reason for that, that language is that needs inevitably change. And if they're linked to a specific project per se, okay, then you're, you're locked to that project. So, now let's balance what I first said versus what's in the proposition. If the explanation to the voters is sufficient, for example, you decided that a facility of an elementary type or a middle school or some facility, you said you were going to do this, but you found out with new information after the, the, the voters had approved it, that there needs a modification, that becomes a matter of disclosure, okay? That becomes a matter of disclosure to where the credibility between the board and the electoral official, I mean, and, and the citizens of the community is not eroded. That is the key.
But I guess the question is, on the motion that we're going to make later today to approve the bond, we have to set the, the amount today. Is that correct or?
The amount is, the amount is what is authorized to go up to, not to exceed.
So, that'll have to be today?
Yes.
Okay.
But not necessarily the projects.
Right.
All that $109 million has to be earmarked for strictly facilities.
Yes, sir. Correct? Yes, sir.
And again, there's a lot of facility and especially in the girls' programs, you know, the girls' programs have grown over the number of years. The band program over at East High School has grown. And, and I'll give you an example, both tennis programs that both schools have done well, but yet they don't have a facility to where they can actually say, "This is our dressing room where we can dress." And other, other of the minor sports, it's the same thing. Golf is the same thing. So, there's a lot of facility needs, especially in the dressing room areas. When Domingo Sepúlveda was built many years ago, it was earmarked only for basketball and volleyball. Now, they house softball, they, they host baseball, they host, what else, Mrs. Morales?
Track.
Track. So, you know, and we've grown and now that we have two schools, we need those facilities and, and we do need that $109 million bondage, so we can be able to do those things in the near future.
Chris, what other bond issues have you heard that are getting ready to go out? Have you heard of anything?
The only other one that, that I'm involved in is with La Feria.
La Feria?
La Feria, actually.
How big are they getting ready to go out?
They're a smaller district and they qualify for $14 million.
Okay.
But the, the same seven cents for the IFA portion.
Okay.
Okay? You remember that the formula for the state- Remember that, um, the formula for the state, for the IFA, to optimize on the state aid, it has to be seven point one four three pennies. That's how you optimize it, at a hundred percent collections.
Right. Now, um, is my understanding that Donna, well, no, not my understanding, it's on the news that Donna's going for, I believe, twenty, twenty-two million?
That's probably-
And Mercedes just received a, uh, just finished building a stadium for twenty million. However, they did not get the reduced rates because they went before the IFAs were available. And, uh, that's an advantage that we have, that we are getting the, the IFAs, so.
I'm not familiar with, with their plans. As a matter of fact, that, that's when Dr. Alejandro was relating that, that it was news to me.
Yeah, but that's, that's what, uh, what I, what I found out through another associate that, that, they, they borrowed, they, they got their bond issue, but they, they didn't get it at, uh, they got it full rate.
To qualify for IFA, you must have the voter authorization. You must submit the application, and you must receive a notice of allotment based on the wealth per student and the list that, uh, Dr. Alejandro was told. And, uh, the timing is the bond election, the thirty-day contest period, the application, the notice of allotment award from the state, and then you, we proceed to, to be able to sell. And you deliver the bond proceeds somewhere in the month of August, and you set your tax rate accordingly so that your state aid can start flowing in for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen.
Okay. Does any other committee member or any other citizen want to come up and?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's been a long time I've been here. But I just wanted to, um, to let this board know what we had discussed previously in our workshop, and also the citizens who are going to look at whether passing this bond or not. I will tell you that there was a lot of questions involved, mainly who was involved, what was prioritized, what was needed. And all of this was done with the understanding that we're putting our students first. Everybody knows that a lot of it has wear and tear. We have extreme growth here in Wasico in the last couple of years, and we take pride as citizens knowing that our children are taken care of, that we are meeting the needs. However, the needs always continue. Um, we talked about the seventy million, and we talked about the hundred and nine million. And there was, uh, Mr. Garcia, I believe, mentioned, well, if we go for one, we'll be paying twenty-four million five, and we're getting forty-five five if we go for the seventy. Why not go for the, the higher one? Okay? Because at that point, then we'll be able to do another construction, and we'll be able to meet some more needs. But most importantly, we'll be able to get IFA money. And what that means is that the citizens of Wasico or the school district won't have to pay a hundred percent of whatever is borrowed, and that's a very big thing, especially for citizens like us, as taxpayers. We want to see that our money is being used for what is needed. We want to make sure that, uh, we don't pay a penny more than what we have to out of our pockets. And that, to me, is very, very important. Um, we asked several questions. Uh, we asked about the previous bonds and how it had gone. And I was very pleased to hear that in our previous bonds, the money that had been addressed as how they were going to be allotted were fulfilled. And that's one thing that we look at, that if you're going to come out here and give us this list that are our priority needs, and this is the amount of money that you're, we're trying to go out there and borrow and ask the state to come in and help us, that is actually going to be done. And Wasico has a very, very good track record in doing that. I take pride in that. I know that Mr. Gonzales, uh, addressed the mini gyms. I was in this board when we created those pavilions. And we created those pavilions with the understanding that within, you know, a couple of years, we were going to enclose them and make them mini gyms. Unfortunately, other things took priority, and they were not done. But I'm glad to see them, that they're here in the list. I'm glad to see that they've already been earmarked, and that it's going to happen. I also was told that it was more feasibly and almost cheaper to build a new one versus to retrofit the ones that we already have. And it's like Mr. Lopez said, you know, I've been out there, I have my grandkids. I put my grand, my children through the school district, and now it's my grandchildren. And I have seen them where it's sometimes raining, and you see them all huddled sometimes, or it's cold and they're out there, or it's hot. And we live here in South Texas where, you know, our heat is pretty, pretty drastic. So you imagine being out there, running in this heat, and now knowing that we're going to be able to provide our, all of our elementaries, and I'm going to say all of them because that was one of my questions, if it was going to be all elementary, and Mr. Alejandro said, yes, all of them will be getting the mini gyms. So there was a lot of things that were asked, a lot of questions that were answered. And I, for one, want to say that we don't know when this opportunity is going to come again. And as a taxpayer and as a citizen, I would push this board, and hopefully you understand that this is an opportunity we cannot pass on. And the reason is, there's free money out there, let's take advantage, let's use it to our advantage to build, fix, and, and whatever it needs to be happened for our students of Wasico ISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manita, and I think you said it, you hit the point where you said, uh, for students' needs, what we, what the students need in our district. Very good point there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, I wanted to say that Wasico, just to reiterate, uh, what Mr. Valdez was saying, Wasico has had a history of having the best facilities in our district. Um, I think that the amount is conservative, whichever amount you, uh, agree to. I think it's pretty conservative, given, you know, the cost of, you know, trying to, to maintain facilities or to build facilities. I think it's pretty conservative. Um, I saw FDR, uh, the day after the, we had that storm. Um, it's sad to see, you know, our kids having to go through that. Um, early college high school, I was involved with, you know, the very beginning of early college high school. We're very proud of what we've done with that facility. But time has not been good to us, to our facilities. We need to, uh, do more for, for our facilities and for our kids. As the assistant superintendent, I'm out there a lot with the maintenance and the, um, with the energy management staff, and I see the needs out there almost on a daily basis. I get calls, you know, from some of you, from Mr. Gonzales about, hey, you know what? You know, this is happening over here, can you get out there? What can we do? So I see firsthand the needs of our, of our district. Uh, so I just wanted to reiterate that the amount is conservative, and our kids deserve it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Principals? Any comments?
Good evening, Dr. Alejandro and board. On behalf of Wasico High School, I noticed the fieldhouse and also the renovations to the dressing rooms. And I want to reiterate what Mr. Nieto said. When Domingo Sepúlveda Gym was built, we didn't have as many sports as what we have now. We've added powerlifting, we have added, uh, wrestling, we have added, I believe, softball. And, uh, we didn't have those back then. And you consider adding all those number of athletes and more students that are involved, and then you double that because you have varsity and also all your subvarsity. So we have outgrown those dressing rooms. And, uh, I like what Mr. Garcia said, you know, we're out there, and we see it. And, you know, when we go into our athletic periods, or we're leaving our athletic periods, you see kids running around trying to change in the girls' bathrooms, our powerlifting and our wrestling team, because the gym over there doesn't have space for them. And the, the teams have been successful, the coaches have been patient, the athletes and the parents. But I too, uh, support this, and I want to thank you all, and, uh, wish you all the best. And I, I, I think we should go for the one oh nine because that's what we need, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. One, uh, one, one of the problems that we have is that we're a district of champions. You know, we continue to get more championships. Consequently, our programs continue to grow, which is a good thing because our kids are the ones that are highlighting us, not only in the valley, but across the state. So, uh, again, we're very proud of our students, and, and we need to do as much as possible to help our programs, to help them to grow.
Doc, how soon will you be able to, um, I know that, uh, the public has not really had a chance, or has not had a chance to look at the, the projects that we have before us. How soon can you produce a, uh, a list for the, you can put on K-Whist or on a newsletter, or, uh, or, or somewhere where they can look at it on, on our website?
We're going to generate that list, uh, probably as soon as tomorrow.
Yeah, I think it's going to be very important to get, get something out there to the public as soon as we, as soon as we act on this, on this item. That way, before any rumors start or any questions, uh, that can be, that can be handled right away. Now, I also did, did ask you for a fact list, you know, for, for the committee and for anybody that wants to get their hands on, uh, as far as facts on, on, on what the tax rate, where it's going, where we stand, uh, who will it affect? Uh, you've already said that the elderly will not be affected, so that, that's a very good point. And, and, uh, the prices of, of what the increase is, uh, is, is, uh, in my opinion, uh, for what we're getting is, is, is moderate. You know, and, and I use that word carefully, uh, because I know some people are, are, are more challenged than, and, uh, but I think that our, our children are priority, and they're the, our future leaders, and, and we need to put them first. So, that being said, uh, does any, board member want to make another comment?
My question is, is can we, once we decide, Chris, move forward, or whatever's on this list, can this list change? Again, as long as we're just going to go with the amount, right? It's just the amount that we're going to prove. And we, you know, just to, again, to make sure that if we do get, go for the one oh nine, that we change the verbiage or show a different amount for Roosevelt.
Well, um, the, a lot of that will depend on the, uh, the method of construction.
Okay.
Usually, usually what happens is, um, that, uh, the district has, has a history, for the most part, of doing competitive seal proposals, and what that does is, is allows us to get the best value.
Okay.
Uh, so we've, we've done, we've done everything possible to try to get you as, as close numbers as, as we can, but that does not mean that these figures are, are set.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we might realize the savings. And, and again, um, the, the actual construction, like in Roosevelt, um, I'm, I'm pretty certain that, that we were working with an architect, that he can go ahead and, um, come up with a plan that would allow us to go ahead and tie the two buildings together.
Okay.
And, uh, and go ahead and comply with, uh, what you're requesting is.
Please, and I guess one other need for me that I see with, with, uh, we started the junior high softball, baseball program this year, and it was a success. And I think we had a little over three hundred students that came out and participated. Uh, but I do see those two sports growing. So I would hope that we could see maybe a canopy or more bleachers, not the bleachers, but the canopies for the parents at the stadium, since they utilize the junior highs and the varsity and subvarities utilize the, the fields. Then maybe we can provide a, at least a canopy, uh, for them at, at East and at High. Yeah, because they play during the day.
Unfortunately, um, the, the, the list that we have is, is pretty well set. And as was mentioned earlier, um, once the board approves this, it's, it's, it's a contract between the board, the district, and the community. But what we could do is, we can go ahead and take a look at, uh, monies that we save to try to address those, uh, separate and apart from the bond.
Yeah, I, I think we have some money. Doc, uh, don't you set aside a million dollars every year for construction?
Uh, we, we try to set aside some money as for-
There's some money in the budget. How much is it, Andre?
The real number.
Construction that we haven't used from last year.
How much is that?
The real number.
A million, and we have another two and a half million and, and the significant balance for facilities that we can use also.
Okay, so there's, there's some money that you can, I mean, if you're talking about bleachers and, uh, and a canopy, that's not going to add up a lot of money. And being that you, it's the, trying to change the list that the whole committee's been working on for four, five, three or four weeks, it's already kind of a little difficult. Anybody else?
Mr. McHale? Anything? No, we'd like to hear from different people, so that way we know that, you know, the support will be there.
Well, um, from some of y'all that don't know who I am, I'm George McHale. I've worked for South Texas College for the last sixteen years, and been through two bond elections with them. And it is all about the students and all about the needs. Um, today was the first meeting I actually attended just because I had some, um, some other arrangements in the past, so I couldn't make it. But what I, what I saw was that the process is inviting some of the committee member, or community members here to go through this process and, and hear their concerns and, and, because you have so many campuses and so many buildings that you have to attend to.
Right.
When it comes to roofing, roofing is probably one of the most important things you got to take care of, other than, of course, the foundation of the building. Because if you have water or any type of, um, anything that's coming into the building, not protecting your students, it's going to be an issue. So, um, and of course, the administration in the back and behind the scenes, y'all come with, with the needs for each campus that they need and all the principals. So, um, I think probably going forward is, once you decide what amount you're going to go for, it's all about marketing and getting the, getting the word out to the, to the community. So that's, that's all I have to say, and I do appreciate being part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all of those that, that, uh, came out and, that were on this committee. Thank you.
Come on up.
Good e, good evening, Dr. Alejandro and school board members. I'm here to, also in support of, uh, your initiatives for the Wasico ISD, uh, construction and, and items that you have on the bond. I do want to speak out, uh, in regards to the early colleges that, uh, Dr. Alejandro is, is pushing forward. I know, I remember meeting with him earlier in, when I started there at the Louis Black Early College. And one of the things that we discussed was the fact that this, the elementary school, Louis Black is an elementary school that the rooms were built to hold small kids, you know? And when you put high school kids into those rooms, you know, it, it becomes pretty packed. So, um, I really like the initiative that you have put the early colleges higher up in your ranking, uh, along with the committee, and I'm here just to support that, that initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you. Roosevelt's real excited, and, um, you know, we've been there since two thousand and seven. We were at Louis Black, and then we moved over to Roosevelt. We moved, actually, in a weekend, and we started school. And my, my, my teachers and my students are real resilient. You know, they went through the flood, and, um, but they're doing awesome. And we're real proud of our school, and I think in closing it, you know, is going to really help with my attendance. Um, a lot of parents are kind of reluctant to send the children there because it's open. It is good to get fresh air and, and so forth, but the, the awnings are very high, so a lot of times it doesn't even protect them because they were built too high. Uh, maintenance went in and built lower ones, and those are a lot better. And, uh, the gyms, it'd be awesome because we do have a lot of problems, of course, with the pigeons and so forth. I know it's going to be kind of, um, a challenge because of the land. We don't have too much land. But, um, I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Hi, I wanted to talk a little bit about our needs at East. I know that, um, we're busting at the seams when it comes to our BAN home- I know that we're busting at the seams when it comes to our band hall. Renovating that band hall might seem like a good idea, we really do need just an extra complete new building, and I think this is a good start. Also, the number of girl athletes participating has grown, grown tremendously, and really, when, when we started off with East, I think we started off with like 10 working showers for the entire, you know, student, female body of athletes, and right now, we're down to like six that are actually working. So that's just not enough to, to take care of all of the needs for, for student athletes going in and taking care of their needs to be able to get to class on time. You see some students rushing, you know, their hair still dripping, and they're finding little crevices here and there to, to change into, I mean, you know, using as changing rooms, so it's definitely something that, that I'm glad to see on here. Another thing that's on there are even, you know, some, something as simple as lights, and you're, you're thinking, what lights? The lights at our tennis courts, or I should say, are non-existing lights, because without, you know, those lights, every time that we host a tournament, or that, you know, we, we have to rent portable generators and, and set up lights. So as soon as the light goes out, or I'm sorry, the sun goes down, you know, our kids can't practice anymore, they're done. You know, find somewhere else to practice, or when the, when the time changes and it gets dark by 5:45, you know, 5:30, they're done. It's, it's too dark to actually be out there, so, you know, it's very important, I think. And now I'll talk to you as a taxpayer. As a taxpayer, I know that these needs are here. I know that eventually, we're going to have to pay for these things. To me, it doesn't make sense not to take advantage of this. It's almost like we cannot afford not to take advantage of this, to the point where if we're talking about a 35% investment for a hundred dollar, out of a hundred dollars, you're going to pay back $35, it's, it's a no-brainer, we, we need to try to, to capture that. And I think that when, when people see the number of projects, the, the scope of what we're talking about and how everybody benefits, this is not just going to benefit East with our new band hall and with our remodeled girls' facilities for athletics. It's not just going to benefit West Lico High School with their new fieldhouse and, and their remodel. It's, it's not just going to benefit the, the middle schools, so once, once you take a look at that and you see the number, you know, the impact that it's going to have on our children, all the way across, you know, this is the entire district, so I think that that's where we're going to be able to generate a lot of support, when people see, you know, that we're serious about taking care of our students, taking care of the children of West Lico. Really, that's, that's what I wanted to chime in, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Doctor, can you have somebody follow up on those showers?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I've got a note, I'll have Mr. Garcia follow up on it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say a few words about programs other than buildings and roofs and things of that nature. Those are very important aspects of our district, but I know that every year, we set aside monies for patching roofs and fixing buildings and, and for construction. With this, with this additional funds, we can set free some of those monies and offer more programs for our students, offer more Saturday classes, and actually help more of our students be successful, because in meeting with staff, we can see that we need a lot more money in trying to help these students that are highly at risk of dropping out, and by, by having these additional funds, you can free up some of those monies that we're currently using to patch roofs and to fix actual buildings, and use those monies for programs that are in great need for our students. Also, at West Lico ISD, as you know, we're a very progressive district, we have adopted a lot of these early college, high school programs, and all of those programs require monies, it requires monies for us to purchase books for these students. We want our students to be well-prepared for life after high school, we want them to have those college hours at no cost to the parents. By freeing up some of these funds that we currently have in place to fix buildings and roofs and things of that nature, we can offer more programs for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Axe, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, I just wanted to also show my support for the bond. We spoke earlier in the meeting and we discussed simple ways of analyzing the impact that this would have financially on the taxpayers, and I asked a question as to what the average home value was here, and I think Dr. Alejandro said $67,000?
About $70,000.
So that kind of relates over to about $50 impact financially, which I think is minimal in response to how we can capitalize on receiving this, this money, address all the situations that are at hand, that are challenging our schools right now, so that we can capitalize on that and address all these issues. It's, it's, it makes perfect financial sense to not move forward, and I think between the $70,000 bond and the $109,000 bond, 109 million, sorry, it's, you know, it's, it makes sense to go ahead and, and vote on that, because the impact that it has on the kids, it's just, we don't know when the other opportunity is going to arise, so I think we need to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
And I think putting it in terms of what the average taxpayer is going to be paying, it simplifies things, just the impact that it would have. So, in support of it.
Thank you, Ms. Axe.
Thank you, Ms. Axe. Well, we've heard from about 10 people, does anybody else want to come up and say a few words? Okay, pretty much, I think we're all in the same consensus that, that there, there are needs in this district. Other towns, other cities have, do the same thing, they go out for bonds, they, they, for building, for construction, and when they have needs. I believe Dr. Alejandro told us earlier that Houston and some of the surrounding areas have gone for up to a billion dollars, 1 billion in, in bond money, you know, and, and of course, their needs are bigger, and then there's some towns that go, or cities that go for less. As the committee has stated, they feel that $109 million is where we need to be. So, and, and then we have correct funding, and Dr. Alejandro will, will do what he needs to do, so we can get the, the items on a list and, and get them out to the public, so that we can get everybody's support and get this for our, our children. So, other than that, if anybody else has a comment, we will go ahead.
Dr. Alejandro, we touched on it, I asked the chair in the committee meeting, can you share with the public, and also since it's being televised, as quick as, if the money does get approved by the community, when you can start with the facilities and whatnot?
Well, Ms. Vella had mentioned earlier that once the, the bond is approved by the community, then those bond monies would have to be, those bonds would have to be sold, and then we could go ahead and start getting some of that bond money available to us. So we're looking at about August, Ms. Vella, before we can actually see some of that money, and once we get the money, then of course, we can go ahead and, and start with the meeting with contractors and, and architects to start drawing up the, the plans for each of the facilities that are going to be addressed.
And the reason I asked you to mention that is because it's, it's going to be televised, so that way it gives the public an understanding as to how quick it'll be, like monies will be used and whatnot.
Edward, can I ask you to come to the mic, so that it, for the.
Can pick up the recording.
Start again.
The reason I asked you to, to go over that is because since the meeting, this meeting's going to be televised, it gives the public an understanding and, and educates them as to the sense, as to how quickly your monies will be, the monies will be utilized for the different projects and, and whatnot that you have going on the list, you know what I mean? So that way, when we go out there to try to educate them, they see this and they're already aware as to, you know, timeframe-wise, as to, as soon as the money, if, when the money gets approved by the community, how quickly you can move on the facilities, you know what I mean?
Right, it, it, it will be at the beginning of the next school year, the 16, 17 school year, because it, once the bond is successful, and I'm going to say, once the bond is successful in May, then what will happen there is we'll apply for the monies, and then if they, it'll be approved, so we will start seeing some results, and then, of course, the bonds will need to be sold to try to get the best value in terms of the interest rates. So, all of that depends on the final amount, and then at, at that, the money should become available to the district somewhere around August of, of this year.
Oh, that's coming in, okay. Okey-dokey.
You also need to take into account, Edward, that architects need to be hired, and recruits need to be taken, and all, and all the planning needs to happen.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, and I believe everybody had an opportunity to talk, we're going to go ahead and conclude this workshop, and take a little, anybody need a little break? Just want to go right into the meeting.
Let's go.
Okay. So that was the end of the workshop, and now we're going to call this special meeting of February the 10th, the time is 6:10, again, special meeting of the West Lico Independent School District. Item number two, establishing a quorum, let the record reflect that we have Oscar Caballero, Isco Oroñeto, Andrew Gonzalez, and Derazmo López, present creating the, the quorum. Item number three, approval to purchase art books for elementary schools and high schools. Dr. Alejandro?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, we have what's called, in instructional materials allotment funds that are available to us, and we purchase mainly books from there, but we can purchase other materials, including some technology materials, but there's a need right now that we had some eBooks that were approved, and campuses have requested that they also have a hard copy book. So, we're coming to the board, just because it's such a large amount, we are acquiring these from a sole-source vendor, but because of the amount, we wanted to bring it to the board. So, we're requesting that the board approve the purchase of art books for elementary schools and high schools from Davis Publication Incorporated, located in Worcester, Massachusetts.
All right. Someone.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Andrew Gonzalez and a second by Isco Oroñeto on these elementary school books and high school books, and any discussion?
Are all the elementary schools included, or just a certain amount of them?
All of them.
All of them? Okay, and both high schools?
Okay, Ms. Peterson, I see that you, you requested the purchase, so you being our curriculum and instruction.
The art teachers met and art books are up for adoption this year, along with other series. We already purchased all of the math and social studies books that were up, the fine arts are in the process, it's taking a long time to get it taken care of, but the middle schools also received an adoption, but it's purchased, the state pays the publisher directly, so that didn't have to come before you. This, we have to pay the publisher. Davis Publications was the only publisher that met the teaks requirement set by the state, they had a 91.67% match of teaks, and they are the only publisher for art materials on the state-approved list.
Perfect.
So that's why we're purchasing from them. And the high schools also have an online adoption, what's listed there for the high school is a supplemental for the advanced art students, they have a basic adoption that'll be used in all the Art One classes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And the money for this, Doc, is?
Is part of the instructional materials allotment, so it's an allocation that we get from the state.
It's perfect.
Monies are available.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number four, consideration and possible action on an order calling a bond election for May 7, 2016, making provisions for conducting the election and ordering other matters incident and related to such election. Dr. Alejandro?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, we just had a workshop, we just finished a workshop to take a look at the bond that we currently qualify for. We have had some meetings with the bond committee, and it is, we proposed, we took a look at two sin, options, one of them was going out for a $70 million bond, which we currently qualify for, based on the new IFA monies that we have become available in the state. The, the problem with that is that we have a lot of facility needs, and that would limit the number of actual needs that we can address. The committee had looked at, at the priority list that included several other projects, and the, the total amount for that was $109 million. Based on what the committee had discussed with us, and based on the workshop, it, it seems that there's a consensus that they want to go ahead and, and take a look at all the needs that we have set as a priority, and are, are interested in going out for the, or seeking the $109 million bond. So, recommend that the board consider, that the board consider approving going out for an order calling a bond election for May 7, for $109 million.
I move that the board of trustees adopt the order provided to the board of trustees calling a bond election for May the 7, 2016, and making provisions for conducting the election and ordering other matters incident and related to such election, and that the amount of the bonds presented in the proposition be listed as $109 million.
There's a motion, do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Oscar, go ahead.
I'll second. Okay, there's a motion by Andrew Gonzalez and a second by Oscar Caballero, any discussion?
Let's work the community.
We need some discussion.
I think everybody was positive on what we, the school district needed, and I think going forward, we promote it correctly, and I think the people will vote for it.
I'm going to add that the committees have been meeting for three or four weeks, and as Dr. Alejandro stated, that the, there's a consensus of going for the $109 million to get more for our students. This, this bond is, is solely and entirely for the betterment of our children, and this commu, our community, my community, we all need to stand together and, and get this for all our, all our students, all our teachers, and, and just for the future, and not only for our kids, but for the kids of our kids, you know, which are, will be our leaders, and, and this is just to make them better at what they're already doing. So, it's a good, it's a good thing, I support it 100%, and ask the community to do the same.
I'd like to thank all those that participated in the committee, thank you for taking the time out and, and coming to meet and share your concerns, and it really means a lot to us, I think we've been speaking about this for a long time now, and to see this moving forward is really, really good, and to all the principals, you know, I've always said, you know, it, it lies with y'all to help us do our best up here, and y'all met the challenge with the ADA, and here's another challenge presented before you, to help this board to achieve these goals, these needs that our children deserve.
Let me just add real something real quick, you know, and just, you know, 60, we're going to be getting about 60% of $109 million for free, which, which would probably be a what, 60-something million that we're going to be getting for free, you know, I mean, there's, it's a deal that we cannot pass, and I think we're all going to need everybody's efforts to go out and, and educate the community on, you know, this free money that we're going to be getting, so I'm, I'm 100% behind it, it's free money for the district, this money is going towards our, our, our kids and, and the future, you know, so I'm, I'm for it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Vice President, if I may, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank the bond committee, and I know they're not all, well, principals. committee and I know that not all principals were involved in the bond committee, but I, I wanna thank the principals that came up in, in support of the bond and you all made some very significant points in the sense that these projects are for the benefit of our students, our kids, our children. We are a very progressive district and, you know, our, our students continue to highlight our district. I mentioned earlier that we're a district of champions and, you know, it, they keep, they keep demonstrating that and we all see it because we recognize all kids that have some kind of a championship, you know, at, at all grade, at all grade levels, elementary, middle school and high school. So we recognize them during board meetings and again, I appreciate you supporting that, but it's for the best, it's for the best interest of our students. So I wanna thank everyone, the board, the committee, the adminis, the staff here because this, this shows that we have a commitment to our students and that we want the very best for them. So I just wanna say thank you because this is gonna be a win-win for each and every one of our students, all 18,000 of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we're set, we're moving forward. The last item, item number five, is adjournment. And the time is 6:20.